The principal's report from the beginning of the year. I'll just highlight a couple of things and then since then, a couple of things have happened I wanted to tell you about. So I think Miranda Johnson put her name into donorschoose.org and received donors from a variety of states for these whisper phones for kindergarten. I don't know if you know what they are, but it's a little contraption really that kids can talk and hear whisper and then hear themselves. It's very cute and really helps them with pronunciation and they're still talking, but they're not hearing and not everybody's hearing them. So it's a great thing to have in a kindergarten classroom because they get very excited about their reading. And so we, I think we might try the donors choose again because people are looking for things to donate, you know, specific things that they want to donate money to, so we were very excited to get that. Really wanted to point out the band numbers. If you could see 2013-14 school year, there were 97 students. Last year, there were 112 students. This year, we have 139 students in our instrumental program. Just phenomenal. It's well over 50%, so very excited about that. And just, there are also the numbers in the seventh and eighth chorus, there's 37 kids in the chorus. I don't know how many of those are crossover. I couldn't get the fifth and/or sixth grade chorus numbers yet, but I know those numbers continue to go up too. So that's a very high percentage of our middle school students that are participating in music, which is just wonderful.
That's a good question.
Absolutely.
So many often in the past, scheduling has been a challenge, like you know, kids had to miss algebra so that they could go to band and choose between math and music. And that goes way back.
Right.
So.
In every school across the country.
Right.
As a music teacher.
Something, some magic happened. We had some scheduling fairies come in.
Well, we're able to.
I don't need to link the explanation.
We were able to lengthen the day by 15 minutes, which was fantastic. But then we had some tough choices to make and band and chorus come out of the unified art design. And jazz band does lunch and rec in 20 additional minutes, so we really tried to stay away from that core instructional time. But it's, we very much dislike that they're missing anything at all. So we need to think creatively about what does make the most sense because we are both so excited that there's so many kids involved. But when everybody goes to band, then you have four or five kids left in the class. And then that provides a new challenge.
Right.
But it's a, it's a good, it's a good problem to have.
It's a great opportunity we can try. Yes, those numbers are great. I don't think you'll see those numbers in other schools, so we're really excited about those. Yep. And just so you know, we have student interns who are still continuing to get many, which is great for us as a school and as a school community. And we're, for the first time, we have kid, I talked about their dual enrollment. So when these students graduate from UVM, they'll be licensed in both special ed and elementary ed, so they're with us for the whole year. And they work, we have one that's with Lisa Stanton and Erin Keim and they are, they do co-teaching anyway, so she'll know the kids. And then in the second part of the year, she'll work with, continue to work with Erin, the special educator, some in Lisa's class, but also in other classes too. So it's, it's a great way, it's a great thing for those students from UVM and it's wonderful for us as a school. So we're really excited about that. This is the first time we've had that. So far, it's going really well. I gave you the list of the, of our staffing list.
Lovely, thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome. I, but I should have done color because I had the, the new staff highlighted in yellow. I don't know. Anyways, so if you have any questions about that, you can see we have returning staff and some new staff, but.
And I think as always, our new staff, they're phenomenal.
Oh, my gosh.
It's just, it's always great to get new staff and to work with the veteran staff that we have and it's just a great combo.
Yep, it is. So I just, I also wanted to share this with you. This is something Vicki Hoffel, who did duct tape parenting. She's coming through the help of Pi. Actually, Pi is sponsoring her. She was supposed to come last spring, but she had a family emergency, so couldn't come. And that just got set since I did this report. So she's coming next Thursday to be at school. It's free. We're asking for donations, whatever people want to throw in a basket, but Pi's sponsoring it. So very excited to have her there. And we also are going to have an RSVP volunteer, which is Retired Senior Volunteer Program, I think, is run through the United Way. And it's, the person's going to be in Eunice Brant's kindergarten class. So it's a certain number of hours a week and it's very exciting, yeah, it's great. We're really excited about that and the kids are already excited, so. And then you'll see some of the things we have. We already had our K-2 curriculum night and the 3-4-1 and we're having a open house and spaghetti dinner. And then I'll give you the next, next events we have at the next one. We are still having the UA and Harvest Dinner coming up in October. Lots of things happening already. It's a pretty exciting place to be. Any questions or?
I have a question in common.
Yep.
Do you remember what the, what was it, the last year?
Yep, I thought you might ask that. I happen to have that right here. 525.
Brilliant. So we're down four.
Yep. Some of that is the triple A program is down a couple and that's really based on, based on services, service plans. We have 19 or so new students overall. It's just for a variety of reasons that some students have moved.
And my comment was, the person I'm related to by marriage.
Yeah.
Really happy with the website, the homepage and how it's updated. And she's, I don't know if she commented, you guys, but she wanted.
Yeah, she did.
Oh, she did? Okay, well, she wanted me to give, give feedback, so.
Yeah, thanks. We've been getting a lot of the.
Sports stuff's there and this and that and she's really appreciative, so thank you for doing that.
Yep.
We've gotten a lot of positive feedback on our new athletic director as well and how on top of everything she is. Good, so it's been good to get that positive feedback.
Right.
Thank you.
Yeah. Great.
We would gladly welcome some new students as long as they're in the sixth grade.
Okay. We'll put that on our front porch bar.
I remember there's only two teachers there, so. First grade. That's our highest, that's our highest class size.
First grade will be sent in.
Yeah.
Actually, you know what? I think we've had two students since this is, now that I think of it, I think we might be interested.
Always changing.
Yeah, it is.
What do you want us to call this hotel or whatever it's called?
Yeah. The Heinsberg Hotel.
All right, thank you. 5.2 SU debrief. I was tardy, so I can't debrief the first part of the meeting. Bill or Colleen, would you like to share?
How about if we share? We'll tag team on it.
You, you start and I'll finish.
Well, probably one of the big things that we did is talk about the need for a committee on consolidation, but we'll talk about that later in our agenda. We had a presentation on open meeting laws and we're reminded of processes in place that we've adhered to in the past and new tweaks on the requirements. And I don't know if we're going to discuss that tonight in further detail, but there's material in the packet that is very useful. Go ahead, Bill.
Well, with the budget committee, where there's a budget, is it called a budget committee?
Budget committee. We had a budget committee update.
That's meant to talk about the best way to form the budget and do, do their students doing some more work on that, but kind of getting us the pre-game plan in our hands, maybe in a more efficient, better manner, is that?
It's a, it's a committee that Bob Mason wanted to pull together to develop expertise.
Right.
At each of the local boards on the process and our rep is Stacy. And they've, they've met three times and their chair is Jeff Solomon.
We had a great presentation on Act.
Oh, the, yep, the Act 46. Nicole Mace, the VSBA executive director.
Right. So.
Are there, let's see. I think that's, you know, those are the highlights.
All right, thank you very much. 5.3, fourth quarter FMR. Who's going to handle that one? For a presentation at least?
Yep, I can.
Okay.
So you, I'm just getting to it now.
Yep.
Do you know what page, oh, there it is. So.
It's, so everyone who wants to find it, it's on page 16.
So we did really, really well at the end of the, at the end of the quarter.
Understatement of the evening.
Yeah. So we, we kept an eye on it all years, you know, and, and we were really conscientious and maybe to, you know, just to a fault, but that's how we've kind of, kind of governed the school the last couple of years and with an eye always on the, on the numbers. And so we finished quite a bit ahead. So we, we were able to add $228,000 to the, to the fund balance, which is great. And that's even with the 75 that the board allocated to help in the budget process. So I mean, food service, kudos to Deb and her team, really did a good job to close out the end of the year. And, and even moving ahead to this year, I'm noticing that there's just, the participation is still pretty strong, so. So unless you have questions, I mean, we're.
My question for the fund balance is, the number is, am I reading it right?
The 584?
Mm-hmm. Which we're back now in a comfortable place and that, you know, the, three years ago is when it was close to zero. So, so we're.
That, that is pre-audit, just so we know it's not necessarily definitive for budgeting purposes. It is subject to audit, but you know, it's, it's not going to change much, hopefully, if at all.
Kudos to the administration for managing the budget. Thank you.
And that was primarily because of openings and people not being hired and some reorganization changes.
The.
Just some of it.
The over, consolidation, we were favorable in consolidation. So that was, that was a piece of it. But there was, yeah.
People worked hard.
Some of our tier two delivery systems changed.
Yep. Decreases in administration was a piece of it.
Living with less.
With the same amount of kids.
And you'll advise us during the budget process of whether or not those were good changes or not, or temporary or?
But also remember, we did do some additions. So we increased art this year. So kindergarten, first and second grade students have it twice a week, which has been wonderful already for those students. We added another behavior interventionist because that was something that came from the forum of how do we remember the parents saying we want to be able to support our teachers more? How can we do that? And Jeff and I decided to do it that way rather than another guidance counselor. And so we've, so it's not that we've only been cutting, we've been figuring.
These were for this year's budget. So we'll see how we do at the end of this year. But for, yeah, I mean, we have been in the reduction.
But I remember the past few years, right?
Well, I appreciate the fact that from Rice, it seems like you guys have thought about, very thoughtful, thoughtful about the decisions you've made. Seems to me from feedback, you can say that they've been the right decisions, so we appreciate that.
There's, and just for some forethought, there's a couple of big tickets coming off in terms of the five-year boiler. I'm losing the word here. It wasn't, it wasn't, was it a bond?
Yeah, the five-year, it was a five-year one.
There's the five-year bond and then the 96.
Retiring the bond.
Yeah, so there's, there's the five-year boiler bond and then there's the 96 wing that I believe was the 20-year. But I'll go back and check those, but it's just something to keep in mind, especially for facilities, when, when we're able to meet as a facilities committee to understand that. That those are going to impact the budget positively moving forward.
All right, any questions?
Thank you very much. Moving on to discussion matter 6.1, there are a number of policies, five of them, that are part of our regular circulation. There is a good summary of the proposed changes, of which there are not many, on page 24 of the packet. Again, these ones are a discussion item, so if anyone wants to discuss any of the proposed changes, including a outright repeal that the policy committee is recommending to D-17, now would be the time.
So I'm on the policy committee and most of the changes have to do with either requirements of, you know, requirements from the AOE or some other legislative changes. But I think the one that we probably need to have a little bit of discussion, just so people understand that we're not giving up supervision and evaluation. The policy recommendation, the committee's recommendation is to repeal it because we have other systems already in place. It's redundant and one of the goals of the policy committee is to eliminate policy that's redundant. This particular one, it has no teeth. There are already systems in place that ensure supervision and evaluation processes. So this is, it's not needed and it doesn't mean anything. It's not that we're getting rid of supervision and evaluation, so I could go more on that, but that's enough. And if I could just, you know, for, for the most part, that just gets back to some of the goals of the committee in reviewing policies is that we want the policies to have meaning. And so when policies are going through the cycle, one of the first things we do is we look at that, that first statement on the policy. Is that clear? What is the policy? And if not, then we start tweaking that. The other thing that we're doing is we're looking at the VSBA model policies and as much as possible, trying to adopt those more uniformly. And we're finding that there are not a lot of changes when we're looking at VSBA, except for just, you know, the substance of policies. But that's one of the guiding norms for the group.
Thank you, Colleen. So again, these five are on discussion this month and next month they will show up for approval, usually in the consent agenda. So we're not called to act on any of these tonight. It sounds like no one has any feedback to go back to the committee with, if you need that.
Yeah, just.
To confirmation. All right, 6.2, Act 46 merger committee. So we talked about this at the SU meeting a little bit, but Kathy, for your edification as you weren't there. In connection with Act 46 and any proposed consolidation, a committee needs to be formed by the districts that are contemplating doing a merger. So we need, if we are inclined to participate, well, excuse me. It seems to be the case that some, if not all of the schools in our SU, school districts in our SU are inclined to form a merger committee. So if there's going to be a merger committee formed, we need to answer the question whether we want to be a part of that.
And to clarify, the committee, merger committee is discussing whether to move forward or whether or not to move forward. So if you affirm the committee, it's not an act of saying we are going to move forward with consolidation. The, the committee is discussing.
Correct.
Whether to or not to consolidate.
And the AOE, the agency has a template for a report. So if the, if the committee agrees to move forward with submitting a proposal to the State Board of Education, there's a template that that committee would work on. Part of that is also communication plan, part of the template. So it's not like this study committee would go into a, a black hole and reappear six months from now. There's a, you know, the part of the intent is that there's active communication that's happening.
So for purposes of 6.2, we need to have a discussion about whether we're interested in participating in such a merger committee.
Should we remind?
You'll see, you'll see in 7.5 that we have an action item to appoint two members to the merger committee. That is there because we needed a placeholder. That is not supposed to presuppose that we're going to do it. So I don't want to cut short this discussion about whether we should do it and jump to the action items, but we need to discuss two things. And I don't care if we do them both now or one now and one later. We need to discuss whether we as a board and a district should participate in the merger committee. And then if the answer to that is yes, then we need to appoint two people to it. So I guess let's deal with the first question first, which is, are we inclined as a board to participate in the, the proposed merger committee?
Yes, me, I feel yes.
Can I just go? Probably not an easy question, but we went through the RED process and this is different, pal?
This is, this is a little bit different. Well, it's a lot different because there's a new law on the books that is really, in my view, mandatory in making us examine the question. And if we do not do something affirmative, the Board of Education has the power to do something affirmative in.
2019.
Three-year, effective in 2019. And we may not like what they do affirmatively to us if we don't voluntarily do something affirmatively.
Maybe the good background for Kathy to have would be part of the incentive to.
Yeah, I know that's right.
There, and, and you know, as an incentive to get us to do something voluntarily, there, there are tax benefits to us.
And does the merger have to be an entire merger of the school district?
In order to get those tax incentives, yes. In order to get what are, what Nicole from the VSBA called the accelerated incentives, yes, everybody needs to go along with it. In order to get some different incentives under the RED regime, you don't have to have everyone go along with it. Sort of what happened in Mount Mansfield area and Huntington not going in with everybody else.
Can I ask you a question?
Sure.
Did the board think that the conventional, there is the accelerated and the conventional, I believe. Did they think that the, that the incentives were that much less?
I don't know that we necessarily had that discussion, so I don't know that there is an answer.
That's why I didn't know if I.
That would be part of the study committee's work, this timeline.
Yeah, yeah. That would certainly be something I would expect the merger committee to look at in examining whether to pursue one quick, whether to pursue anything quicker than not.
And this is probably not in the legislation, but something we've talked about here is the idea of merging middle schools, which, would this committee be able to look at that or is that outside the box of what the legislation is?
Well, I don't necessarily agree with that. I think it would certainly be something for the merger committee to consider in terms of, I don't want to characterize it as an advantage or disadvantage, but something you could do, an opportunity that a merged district could do. Now, whether it's good or bad, that's a totally different question, but it would be an opportunity that it could be explored. And I would expect the merger committee to discuss that in connection with their contemplation of whether to recommend a merger.
Just from the, this is totally my parent, it's probably, actually, it says the school board member because I've been asking this question and I've been surprised at how many positive responses I've had from Shelburne and Charlotte. Yes, we absolutely would love to see a combined middle school. And I'm totally amazed, amazed, I mean, I haven't found one person who says no. So, so anyway, just a personal.
We, I don't.
It seems, it seems like a place we eventually should go to.
Well, all the assets go into a single pot.
Right, so it makes it easier to make that step.
It would certainly, given that, I don't know that we've gotten a definitive answer to the question, how do we do that now? In part because it's so complicated versus how would we do it under a merged district? It's night and day.
Yeah, I can see that.
Well, I think we better have a merger committee.
I'm feeling two?
Yeah, oh, yeah.
Okay.
Did you want to share with Kathy the?
Oh, yeah, absolutely. Here, I have a, I have one. You keep the one with your notes. I can get another copy if you want. That is the motion that the SU, did we, we pass it? We did pass, pass those two motions.
Well, what I would say too is, is I think we would not be serving the community properly if we didn't even explore getting, having, being a part of this committee. I think we're, you know, we're doing the best for the community, I mean.
We wouldn't be doing our jobs.
Discussion, right, discussion is better than no discussion. So like I said, forming the committee does not predispose any final, final decision on whether we move forward or not. But we got to do it just as our jobs to serve the community and the best way to explore all options, so.
Okay, all right. Just for the record, I couldn't be any more in favor of participating in this committee. So.
So we have an opinion?
Are we contemplating also, this has a $25,000?
That was passed and moved and approved as well at the SU. Because there are, there are some, there are some grants to assist the merger committee in those expenses, but you need to have a formal approval like that in order to apply for them.
You can't get the grant plea, have the committee.
Yeah. All right, so then the question is, do you want to talk about which two board members should be appointed to that now or when we get to the action matters in five or 10 minutes?
Talk about now.
All right. Do you want to do it?
You know, I'm not, I'm gonna, this is my last year, so I wouldn't, I don't know that it'd be appropriate.
Okay.
Because I wouldn't last the, I'm interested, but I don't know that it'd be appropriate.
Colleen?
Well, I, I think there are probably at least three of us on this board that have some interest and.
Well, to, to tell you, my thinking is, putting the cart in front of the horse, because I'm going further ahead, there's going to be a healthcare, a healthcare committee too. And I'd be happy to let you do the, someone else do the merger committee and I'd be happy to handle the healthcare mantle, so.
That's a sucker for punishment.
Well, if I, if I could substantiate that, the healthcare, the healthcare committee is going to examine the healthcare insurance that we offer our employees and particularly as that relates to the Cadillac tax that kicks in, which is all stuff under our contracts. So that's why it is, it is germane to what you've been doing over the last couple of years.
Correct, that was my thinking. I think both would be way too much of a time commitment, so.
I, I, I don't know about the healthcare committee, but from the material I've read and the accelerated calendar, if we're going to move quickly on the merger, it's going to require an awful big time commitment. That's my suspicion. I have not.
I'm interested, but I'm not ready to arm wrestle. I mean, you know, you, you know, it's, but I.
What's your level of interest?
Let me, let, so I have not heard from Stacy. I did poll all of you by email and I never heard a response from Stacy or if I did, it was a non-interest, so I kind of forgot about it. It's not just us that have the opportunity, it's any school board director from Heinsberg. So the two CVU reps also could be among the two appointed. I just spoke to them both at the end of the SU meeting and they. I just spoke to them both at the end of the S U meeting, and they both expressed some level of interest, but not enough to really put forth their name and make the commitment that I think is going to be required, so.
If I could offer something else, I think that the work of this committee is so significant that it cannot complete the tasks without bringing in others.
Right.
Oh, there will certainly be need for activities and/or...
Vacation and outreach.
So committees, whatever.
Feedback on, on local governance, you know, how do you make, ensure that there's still local voice? So I, I don't think the work can happen without a lot of people being engaged.
I think that's a great point, Colleen, that's a, that's a very good point.
Bill, to answer your question, I don't think I've been more interested in serving on any committee as a school board member than this one.
Perfect. That's an endorsement.
Perfect.
So moved?
This is, this is, this is the most important work I or we could do as a board, we're going to do as a board this year. And it could be among the most important ever.
So can I move a slate of Keith and Colleen?
Can we, can we wait? Can we wait till we, okay. Yeah, let's wait till seven four, we're almost there. So returning to, thank you very much, that was a very robust and helpful discussion. Going back to discussion matters, six point three, Budget Buddies. We put this on the agenda just to have, if needed, a brief discussion about whether we want to use Budget Buddies as part of the process, budget process again this year. Just wanted to get the feel of the room of whether, okay?
Yes.
All right. So we don't have an action item, but we ought to think about, again, how many, who, and probably start making inquiries with people about them.
Can we put some kind of invitation with criteria out there, so it doesn't feel like it's a closed?
I think in the past, I have done that. I will review my communications, which I think are by email on Front Porch Forum, to see when I submitted such a thing and what it said, and I will take feedback from those that respond. It would not surprise me that if some, or if not all, of the ones who served last year are interested, but I think it's fair to have an open process and invite new people if they're interested.
Bob, I just need to remind you guys about the Budget Buddies, that the budget process is starting like early October.
Yeah.
It's like the second week of October. If you're going to have buddies, you wanted to make sure you knew that so that you'd be in place.
Yeah, yeah, so I, I will look when I would have solicited last year, but I think it was probably shortly after this meeting. It might have been the October meeting, but because of what you just said, might, might need to back it up a little bit.
Are we inclined to, my thought is, is I think we had a good, we've had a good, historically a good number of Budget Buddies. That's my personal feeling. Are we inclined to, if all last year's participants want to participate, to re-invite them? Are we inclined to, if there's interest of additional people, allow some additional people to participate?
I think my view on that is, let's cross that bridge if we get there.
Okay.
I will do an open solicitation and see what comes back.
Okay.
It is a nice use of former board members, too. It's nice to have Jimmy Belger.
I do know that one Budget Buddy no longer has kids at the school, but I'm thinking about, that might be the case for a couple of the Budget Buddies, so I didn't know if that was one of the criteria.
No, 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 in fact, it's...
I remember we had one community member, one teacher.
It's awful nice to have a community member who doesn't have kids in the school in order to get that perspective.
Larry was fabulous for that.
Six point four, this is a running item that we put in there, just to remind us and to ask the question of whether we should have some sort of an article submission to our local paper.
Yeah, let's do Act forty-six in the study committee formation.
Okay. Might you want to take a run at drafting a couple of paragraphs on that?
Oh, okay.
That would be lovely. Nicole Mace had some wonderful material.
I was going to...
On that.
I'm thinking like, like 500 words, right?
Probably less than that, but yeah.
If that's what you want, Chief.
That would be great, thank you, Colleen. And I think the citizen seems, the citizen seems to have been a pretty good vehicle to get word out. Timeliness because of its weekly publication, I cannot recall what its publication deadline is.
So if I were to get something to people by, I don't know, give me a date.
What's today, the fifteenth?
What's the turnaround time that, two days, is two days turnaround for feedback too short, three days, what do you want for...
Is it called the citizen? What's it called?
The citizen.
I'm just thinking, if I were to put something together, I'd want to send it to board members. Oh, you just gave me a deadline, if you told me it's done tomorrow, I'll...
That's what I'm saying, so October first is kind of jumping out in my mind, but that's two weeks, so I don't know how soon everyone wants something to go.
Did you want to do one for Budget Buddies and then one for the formation of the study committee?
Well, the, the Budget Buddies is a relatively short thing, and it's usually, I send it on Front Porch Forum, and it gets out there very quickly.
I'd say we can't start early enough on talking about this Act forty-six.
You want to, can we give you a deadline of next Friday, the 25th?
Yeah.
And we'll take a look at it and get your feedback by the 30th?
I may do it sooner than that.
Then you tell us, give us maybe three business days.
Three days, okay. Business days.
Yeah.
That's fair. We can set, work with that protocol.
Okay, great, thank you very much, Colleen.
Thank you.
Then, seven point oh, now we get to some action. Seven point one, approve 2015-16 Board Work Plan, that is found on page fifty-eight and fifty-nine of the material. This is a, I don't want to say routine, but this is something we look at every year. It changes a little bit, but it's fairly similar year to year in terms of what we look at during the course of our meetings during the course of the year. So I will take a motion to approve that. We don't have to go directly to the vote, and so if you want to discuss or ask questions, we can do that, but I think we need a motion on the table first.
Make a motion to approve the plan.
Thank you, Bill, thank you, Kathy. Are there any questions?
Yes. I would, if the administration would be able to do it, I would love to see, maybe it's going to be done on a different level. I didn't see it on the, on the C S S U one, a little presentation, if doable, not too much on standards-based learning.
I'm sorry, we're...
Work plan?
Yeah, we just looked at the budget to see when the first budget was, and there's something that says it's on the 24th, and I didn't have it in my calendar, and I saw it was on the 30th, so my mind is gone. So, Ree, I'm sorry, say the question again.
Can we just, I was wondering if it'd be doable, if it wasn't too challenging to have something, maybe the timing isn't right either, but on standards-based learning?
For a presentation? Maybe more of a discussion than a presentation, but I'd be happy to share, we're really in the beginning stages of implementation. So it might be that cart before the horse, before I could provide a really solid, in-depth presentation that the board would find helpful, but I'd be happy to put it as a discussion item and...
Well, we may be up here, and you may be in the weeds, like, we may just need an overview of Common Core, you know...
Yeah, if I could talk to, if we could talk to Jeff Evans, who's...
Right, I was just seeing if there was going to be part of the C S S U.
I looked, I didn't, I didn't see it when I looked. Because it is, it is the focus for us this year, and so I, I would understand why there would want to be more.
I think it would be great, maybe feedback to have something, even when you folks get discussions, questions about it, which I'm guessing they're going to come, that you could point people to a PowerPoint you post somewhere or something to have, might make your life a little easier, too.
At the end of last board season, might have been May or June, if you remember, Megan and Jeff led a group that talked about the, the work that we did at the P B G R. And, and we're carrying that forward, but Keith, would it make sense to put it on our board agenda review, time to take a look at our calendar and see if there's a place that we could fit it in?
Sure.
Okay.
Like I said, I know your folks are swamped with...
No, it'd be, the slides and the presentations are all there, what we've used with staff, I mean, the, the work is done, it's just making sure that we have the, the solid and the right information to share with, with you all.
I appreciate it.
Before, before we...
However, you, you, you folks decide to deliver it, just something would be good at some point. Thank you.
All right, with that potential modification to be discussed, are you ready for the question?
Sure.
All right, all those in favor of approving the, um, budget, Board Work Plan, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries, thank you. Seven point two, approve budget assumptions. These assumptions are on page seven point, I'm sorry, we're on agenda items seven point two, they're on page sixty of the packet, and by the way, this is something that the budget committee is looking at, drilling down a little bit to understand the rationale behind these assumptions, so that if someone asks during the budget process, why did you say, for example, on fuel oil, assume actual plus 5%?
The first year I didn't print, you guys always have these...
Oh.
I didn't print.
One of Largess?
Yeah, sorry. Take this one? So anyway, I think what I need is a motion to approve, and then we can take questions.
So moved.
Thank you, Bill. Thank you, Kathy. So again, this is an annual document that we get usually this time of year, in fact, it might be a little early this year, because we're starting, we're starting earlier, that our administrators from central office, probably with local input, no?
This was the first time that I believe that there was a committee set up.
Well, did the committee actually have input on this? Did they meet to...
I believe, I believe that was the...
Maybe they did, okay.
I believe that was the, the charge of the committee is to come up with the assumptions.
Okay, great, so even better. So this document is the result of work of a budget, a committee comprised of board members from throughout the S U.
Well, clarify, I believe the committee's charge is focusing on process, the actual numbers are based on actuals. Right?
But I think it's the, so, right, but it's, for dental, it's going to be up 5% for how, I mean, I think there was some decision-making with this conversation.
There were certainly conversations to understand why what's written there is written there.
But the committee didn't go into data to find the number 5%. They underst, they, their work was to identify the process of how that 5% is identified.
I could try to...
I, I could be wrong, but that was my understanding of the charge, the committee.
Bob is right next door, if you'd like clarification, I...
I'm, I'm fine without it. All right, so there is a motion on the table then. Are you ready for the question to approve these budget assumptions?
Are you looking for a motion?
There, we have one. I'm, I'm asking if people are ready to vote.
I'm ready.
Yes.
All right, all those in favor of approving the budget assumptions, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you very much. Now, seven point three, Budget Calendar, that's the next pages, it looks like maybe sixty-two through sixty-six, seven, sixty-seven, nope, sixty-eight, sorry. It's the S U's budget calendar, so it contains the budget meetings, not just for Heinsburg, but for all of the S U schools. It has the traditional meetings that the Heinsburg School District has for our budget. I don't have the dates right in front of me right now, because they are not, yeah.
If I could put that out there?
Yeah.
On the C S S U site, under Budget Calendar, it has our first review baseline budget S U assessments as November 24th, and on the calendar that you're looking at?
Yeah.
It has it as November 30th?
Well, the work, I found the work plan, and it says November 30 as well.
I hope so, because I'm not here on the 24th.
Well, what's the 24th, is that Thanksgiving?
Tuesday before Thanksgiving.
We do a Monday nights anyway.
We...
Yeah, it's Monday the 30th is right.
We, a while ago, we used to have a meeting right before Thanksgiving on Monday or Tuesday night, but that might have been when there were still school, when stu, those were still student days.
Well, I think we're voting on the budget that's in calendar, or in the calendar that's in calendar form, so.
Yeah, yeah, that's what, that's what, we're not voting on what's on the website.
Good, okay.
We're voting on what's in the calendar on page six, in that case, the November sixty-four. And it says November, Monday, November 30, 5:30, Heinsburg School District, baseline C S U assessments, yeah, so that's what we're voting on.
And then December 14th is the next one.
Uh, yes, and then there was a January four, yeah, January four. Okay. Any other questions? All right, are we ready to approve the budget calendar?
Yes.
All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. Thank you.
I don't think we had a first or a second.
I'm sorry, let's do that again.
I'd like to move the, approval of the budget calendar.
Thank you, Kathy, thank you, Bill. All right, let's just make sure the vote is the same, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, got that clear then. Seven point four, appoint one member to the healthcare committee, I need a motion for that, please.
I'd like to move Bill Baker as our healthcare committee.
I love specific motions, too. Is there a second for that?
There's a second.
Excellent, thank you very much. Any discussion, hearing none, let's vote on the question.
Aye.
All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you very much, Bill.
Thank you, Bill.
Let's go seven five, appoint two members to the merger committee, I need a motion for that, please.
I'd like to move Keith Robertson, do we want Colleen on it, or you want to wait for feedback from Stacy, or do you want to...
I think, well, I'm ready, I, Stacy didn't have any interest in pursuing it, and Colleen has expressed an interest to do that, so...
I'd like to move Keith Roberts and Colleen to the merger committee.
I second that motion.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries, thank you. Seven point six, set public forum date, we need, I, I need a motion first.
So moved.
Thank you, Bill.
That's a, should we get a recommendation from our administrators?
Yeah, I need a motion first.
Oh.
Yeah, so now I need a second. Thank you, Kathy. All right, so to introduce this, we typically have a public forum for our budget deliberations before we start that, early in the process, we did it, we've done it as a standalone in years, we've done it in conjunction with a pie meeting in some years, or at least one year, and last year, I think we did it immediately prior to our first budget meeting. I asked, when this came up on the agenda, I asked our administrators to remind us to confirm that that was correct and to suggest a date to do it this year.
So there, there seems to be a scheduled pie meeting on Thursday, November 19.
So... So, there is that possible date, uh, the biggest audience you're gonna get, if you want a big audience, would be the Harvest Dinner, doing it before then.
We've done that in the past.
It's the UA curriculum night and Harvest Dinner, I don't know.
What, does it start at five, or does it-
Yeah, it starts early.
So it might-
No, it starts at five, dinner starts at five-thirty, but the open house starts at five.
What's the date on that?
October twenty-ninth, I think.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Unless there was some kind of, we totally changed the forum, and there was some kind of-
No, yeah, I think it's too much to, um, I want more people there, and I'm trying to-
How, what time is that in?
Seven.
Seven, seven-thirty.
It's not a good match, in my mind, it's not a good match, it's-
So what date did he say?
So there's a pie meeting already scheduled for Thursday, November nineteenth, at six-thirty.
It seems late in our process.
The hat process, no, no, because our first meeting's not till the thirtieth, November thirtieth.
We will, we will have discussed at the October meeting something, that, the regular October board meeting, we discussed something, but our first budget-specific meeting is November thirtieth.
Right.
The fall play is Friday, November twentieth.
Right.
It's probably too much, too, but-
We're not doing it the night of the play.
I mean, I would either, either in conjunction with the pie meeting, or the nineteenth, or before our budget forum on the thirtieth, those, just having a- Having a set standalone, we don't get anybody. Those two, we've tried both those two, we got more people than-
At least the pie night, we'll get the pie people, which is-
Well, you're right, it could be the agenda of the pie meeting. It's a logical in, in pie, I don't know.
No, I, uh, all I'm thinking about right now is, uh, the HCS information night that's coming up on Thursday. We've done a better job communicating that out, and we have thirty people coming, which is the most we've ever had since I've been around for a pie meeting, so, so maybe it's just that reminder that it's coming and sign up online and-
What's the HCS information night?
It's gonna be a game show.
So, uh, it's the first pie meeting of the year, and it's really trying to get parents in to, to learn more about schools and programs and things of that nature, so, uh, we've emailed all the parents, um, twice with a little, um, a little survey form, will you be attending, and what's one question or wonder that you have about the school? And so it's gonna be in the form of the game show, but it's really to bring people in and let them know a little bit more about what we do.
You guys are so creative.
The pie, the credit goes to them.
So, we would need to first check with the pie folks if they wanted us to be there to, on the nineteenth, right?
No.
No?
Well, I mean, we could do it, uh-
Or we could do it before, I mean, the meeting starts-
A little bit before, but they would, uh, I think they would be very welcome to, to having you be, maybe a little overlap.
I agree with Kathy that we need to double up on another activity, and not triple up, so. And, and you guys don't need another night out also, so how do we consolidate that?
I could have Thanksgiving dinner.
Yeah, well, we have a motion already. I'm sorry, yeah, we have a motion, you can make, you can specify the motion.
Make a motion that we have the budget forum on November nineteenth.
Do I have a second for that?
Second.
Thank you, um, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
What time is that?
November nineteenth, I think it's flexible based on pie's receptivity to squeezing us toward the end of their meeting.
Okay, so their meeting starts at six-thirty, just for, uh-
How long do their meetings typically last? An hour?
So we, we want to go before them, right?
We want to go before them?
I think that you have a-
Or it could be part of the meeting.
My suggestion would be six to seven.
Why don't we let, why don't we let our administrators get back to some-
Okay.
Recommendations for the time.
Not twenty sixteen.
You were doing really good on time.
I know, I'm, I'm, I'm working, I'm working at six to seven, well, look at that, that's what I put in, Jeff, six to seven.
Perfect.
All right, um, eight point oh, consent agenda, can I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Thank, thank you, Colleen. Second from Kathy, thank you, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone say, any opposed? No, hearing none, motion carries. Nine point oh, next meeting dates, our regular board meeting, October twenty, SU board meeting, October twenty, board chairs, October sixth, um, and we've just scheduled a couple more, so, uh, budget meetings, we have the forum on November nineteen, budget meeting, November thirty, budget meeting, December fourteen, uh, budget meeting, January four.
That are not on the calendar?
They're on the calendar that we approved, I'm just shouting them out, so that when I say them, I can then, then to remember them a little bit better. All right, um, we do have an executive session to talk about some personnel issues, so-
It's with me?
Uh, with Ellen, so I need a motion to go into executive session.
Is there a folder?
So moved.
Second.